I'm sure they're gonna wanna do something like that again this year. One place for point of discussion is that we identified in terms of when to open the town meeting warrant. And we have, we've kind of picked a period of January ninth to January thirtieth. So I just wanted to make sure, because the board of selectmen will vote on that, I just wanted to make sure the board of selectmen were in agreement with that. And then after January thirtieth is, that's when, that's when we've, you know, really start to finalize the warrant stuff with, you know, after we have any petitions that might come in or departments that might submit, you know, other things. So we'll look at it, what did we figure that was it like, almost three weeks?
Three weeks, yeah.
Period, yeah, thinking that was a fair period. And then what we also wanted to add is, is putting together like a how to, I know there's some things I've already written, but just to kind of update how to do a citizen petition should that come up. Just because last year, you know, they just, they, you know, you gotta have like some basics in there. There's, there's items that you can't do a citizen's petition on, there's like a list of six or seven items that is statutory and you can't change. You know, having to do with collections, having to do with laws, you know, state laws and stuff that people can't just say, hey, I wanna change this, here's my citizen petition. But just to give some guidelines, we just wanna have that as something that we post on the website so that people have that information. We wanna ask when people.
But there's a Secretary of State's guide, citizens guide.
Yes. There is, yeah.
We link to it, yeah.
We basically wanna highlight that, we wanna highlight that.
And link to it though, so we don't have to keep up our website.
Well, what we.
You gotta be, I'm a little concerned with this director because it's not under our authority.
It's a mid right there.
It's a sec, I just concerned about it.
Yeah, no, no.
If we inadvertently vary from the Secretary of State viewpoint or, I mean, I think there's a, I'm retracting, but put the link to the Secretary of State's guide, that's about it.
Okay. Well, we also have the forms, so I think we did that for, so what we're thinking, so you triggered the thought that this year we have a great tool in that, and we were talking about this with finance team. We all have access to the website. So already we feel like we're gonna be empowered to put more information where it needs to be, so there's a link on there for town meeting. We can put a copy of how to file.
There's a, there's a town meeting guide.
Yep, there's a town meeting guide, there's a stake, we have our own form. If we can use the website as our tool to help better convey the steps of the process so that we're not getting a citizen petition thrown at us with wording that means that we have to create three more pages of information to, to print on the back of the warrant.
I think there's an administrative level that's fine, but I don't think we should be interpreting substantive direction.
Well, yeah, no, I, I agree with you. So what we'll do is, is before we put some of that on there, our point really is that we're trying to streamline it and get people to understand the process.
That's it, that's administrative.
And then also give them a deadline and say, if you're gonna submit a citizen petition, the warrant opens and closes on these dates. Anything after that is that the Board of Selectmen's is a courtesy and it has to be sponsored and allowed by the board and it has to go before the board. Same with departments. So what I usually do during the opening of the warrant process is use that as my time to tell all the departments, listen, I don't care who appoints you, but if you have something that needs to go on the warrant, you at least need to give me a placeholder. What is it? What do you need? Does it involve money? Because if it involves money, I need to call Catherine in the FinCom. We give that three, that three week period to the departments to say, last call, you at least have to identify what you want because we need that information so that we can continue to build that preliminary list of articles. We can update the list and then we can fill in the blanks on the draft warrant. So that's another piece of the coordination that's happening and this will help us to do that. So again, three different lanes, if you will, but they all come down to May first, annual town meeting, what needs to happen and how do we need to do it this year so that we have enough buffer to deal with any uncontrollables or unknowns that won't hit us until later on in the process. So that all.
So can I just look at this, we talked about this already, the open and close, the, the open and close is less than two weeks.
The ninth to the thirtieth?
To the thirtieth.
Twenty one days.
Thirtieth, I had the twenty seventh.
Well, that's, that's on the wrong line.
It's on the wrong line.
It's true, yeah, that line you're right.
It's on the wrong one.
So it's on the spreadsheet, it's a, if, yeah, it's on the spreadsheet.
It's January third.
It centered the line over there.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's centered.
Uh, but we have a, but we have a meeting on, on the fifth.
Yeah.
So that's when we would vote to close it. I, I, I would make it the fifth, that's, it's five days more, so.
So when, when you. Well, he, well, there's an, so there's a logistical issue of why that warrant makes sense. Well, it might make sense if you don't wanna read it at the night of the meeting. So if, when we close the warrant, it means that if we close it that Monday.
Yeah.
Your meeting at seven thirty, people have till four o'clock, they deliver a citizen petition, I can make copies and bring it to the, to the meeting for you, but I won't have enough time to make copies and to ma- make a new thing on the draft warrant and make copies and bring it to you at the meeting. So I need the buffer of time.
Kelly, I'm, I'm willing to work with you on it, but all things considered, if, if we've got forty five articles and somebody comes running in the last minute of one, we ought to be able to deal with it, it's, it means it almost be an embarrassment to the water board or the Park and Cemetery, but, or whatever, but
Okay. It's true, and what you definitely can. Well, this is where I'm gonna need the board's support.
We should be able to deal with it.
This is where I'm going to need the board's support. I'm explaining to you that there's a practical and logistical issue with that suggestion, which I appreciate and respect. But I'm letting you know that when I have fifty different warrant articles to balance and someone comes in two hours before the Board of Selectmen meeting and then the board is upset with me because I'm putting something in front of them at the last minute, I don't think that that's good planning. So what we were suggesting is that we move it so that I have a couple of days to make sure all my ducks are in a row. That's a policy decision I'd avoid.
Kelly, given the fact you'll have all but maybe a last one coming in, could you maybe move that to Thursday, which gives you some time, keeps us on schedule, it does mean you'd have to add that one in, but you otherwise.
I would say Thursday at noon time perhaps would be a good cutoff, because you may just have it on Thursday.
And I'm trying to give you a way that keeps our schedule intact, allows you to provide the stuff in time for us to look at, but gives just a little bit more time that week as a compromise.
I, I don't, there's no vote on that, I'm just making suggestions, I'm explaining why that's difficult for us.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just making a suggestion back, that's all.
And I appreciate that, but.
We're right there, guys.
If we don't negotiate everything on this list, we're not gonna get a good process and a good product.
Can I go back to the warrant then?
So you don't wanna do that, you're saying?
I'm making a recommendation and I'll, I'll take that into consideration as we put together the final thing. What I'm hearing from you is three weeks isn't enough and I'm explaining that four weeks is, it doesn't give us enough time.
It's not a big, Kelly, it's not a big deal, if you wanna see to, to me, it's not.
Well, it clearly is if you're bringing it up during an open meeting that's being recorded.
I'm bringing it up because I think it would be better, but you're saying the three is better?
Okay.
What I'm saying is, the difference between three and four is not a big deal, if we can't make it happen or we can make it partially, that's good. It, it, this is not rocket science, whether it's twenty one days or twenty eight days, we're, we're doing fine. Could I go back to something that was talked about since we're into the warrant, we're really in the schedule, but we're also with the warrant. And as you, you know, bring out that you're gonna start with a closing of the warrant and then certain things happen. So John had mentioned the issue of trying to maintain versions and that. And there's various factors to that, one of them I think, and it'll play in other areas too, is that what's on the document itself is a version and the naming of the files that are associated with it should also have a relationship. My feeling would be that, for example, because today's day and age, everything is filed, it's, it's not really paper. The paper is just an extract from the file. So that order of magnitude, if, if this is the second version of the warrant, somewhere in there, there's something like a V two in the name of the file that is the warrant, so if you're distributing the electronic, we have it that way, and inside it, it says version two. Just order of magnitude, a relationship between being, use the file names as part of the versioning and include in the printed part, in the actual document, something that matches that. So it's very easy to say, oh, the one with that date, oh, that's that file, I, I know which one I'm dealing with and it's easier to control.
Yeah, that's what I envisioned when you first brought it up too. So it probably like up in the right hand corner, we'll have like the version two and then the title.
Just work something out that's.
It'll always be called same thing, warrant, V one, V two, V three.
Something like that, yeah, and it'll be in the foot, yeah.
Yeah.
So just, I'm only asking, not, I'm not saying how to, but to, to, to kind of make all that come together as part of the versioning, as a follow up to what John was saying.
Yeah.
But since we're into that, in a, in a similar way, the operating budgets, as they come, as they go out and come back from the various departments, if they make changes or something like that, I should, I should hope we'd have the same sort of thing.
Yeah.
And they're very clear naming conventions, you know, all of the first things start out, I don't know, physical year so and so and then the name of the department and then the version or something like that. But then when you line them all up, it's very easy to see, oh, oh, there's one more for that department. If you keep calling it a different name of the department and you're sort of by name or something, then it's over here, but you can't see how it is. Just using good naming conventions and, and versioning within that naming convention, I think will help.
And we actually limit the number of versions of the, of the operating budget that we, that we send out, they apply to be two to three max.
Yeah.
In terms of after they meet with the, the departments, it's only after they do votes that, that they get changed and then the final one is cut out.
Right.
So that, you know, we, we limit the number of versions anyway, even though this, they may be talking about changes, nothing's done until the final night.
The potential on that, could, could I just understand, we, we talked about some of the auxiliary things that go on with the operating budget. For example, unfunded.
Uh, the, what they're calling them is essential unfunded.
So, so where is that, where is that, how is that being managed? What, is that part of the same file or is it a separate file?
So. It is.
And who is managing it and?
I, I will be managing it, it'll be similar to last year, I think that that worked out last year, having that sheet where people could just go down and look at and then we kept adding to it this way in terms of, you know, what the, what the selectmen felt, what the FinCom felt and what was final.
That's a spreadsheet in all, you're gonna see columns, you're saying the spreadsheet?
It is a spreadsheet, yeah. Yeah, it is done on a spreadsheet, I did not bring a copy of last year's with me.
But, but that's okay, now is that spreadsheet part of the budget?
Uh, it does become part of the budget, yes.
So it's all in one file?
It is all in one file.
When you send it out to departments, it, it has the skeleton budget that they're gonna fill in for this year and then there's another sheet that has this kind of a file in it.
No, no, so when, when the, when the departments got the budgets, they got just the template for their department.
Yeah.
So that's actually a, a document that when they send these back, the V one, V two and V three, the forms.
Yeah.
So there's, there's salary and wages information, there's changes to the, the regular expense operating and then there's things that are above and beyond, the things that they wanna change services or something like that, even, even though they said no changes of services. If there's, you know, you can't say.
But never, there's, the point is is that there's these other documents that relate to the department.
These, these three documents.
Is there any reason why they would not be part of, so to speak, of one, instead of having more files to deal with, they're dealing with them essentially at the same time, why would we not have those as sheets within the operating budget? Doc, within the operating budget file? It's one less thing to have to manage on your part.
It is, it is in part of the operating budget file for me and I, I'm not really sure what you're asking.
Okay, then let's go onto other things, I don't wanna get into the warrant. Yeah, I understand, the question is how do we, the issue is, how do we manage so that we don't get into trouble?
So last year we provided.
Excuse me, we're at the FinCom meeting, we'll say. Cause this, the reason that this thing really started was because we went to a FinCom meeting, what I were describing last year's Zoom. Well, I was looking at this one, they were looking at that one, but I can just see the same FinCom meeting. So we're all looking at the Park and Cemetery budget and somebody's also looking at, well, here's their required things. Well, I don't see that, well, which version of that do you have? Uh, if they're all part of the same one, then did you get that budget? All those things are in there? It's, not that you, you can't manage it if they're separate, but if you can package them, it's just an easier way to manage it.
Well, last year, we didn't, we didn't update the budgets last year either, but what happened and what we, what we had asked department heads this year not to do is that, it happened at the first Board of, Board of Selectmen's meeting as well with the police department, is they, they gave me a budget they turned in two days earlier. The day that they met with you, they went around the table and handed out a new budget. We told them no doing that, then they went to the FinCom and they handed out another budget. So that's why we're saying no, all budgets need to only go through here and, and the, the FinCom has supported that, they.
Yes.
And it's also, it was included in, in my little cover letter as well, saying, any changes, make sure you talk to your liaison, but it has to go through this office. So that's where that stuff comes in, that was, that got beyond our control because of, you know, people, you know, him, handing out these budgets after. But the, the list in terms of the unfunded, essential unfunded, it, it worked out pretty well last year that everyone was on the same page in terms of what they were looking at in term, that was places where decisions needed to be made regarding the budgets. This year it's gonna be a little bit more complicated because places where you think you have decisions, you don't really have decisions. And a good example of that is the trash contract, that's a ten year contract that was signed five years ago. Now it's a twenty five thousand dollar increase, that twenty five thousand dollar increase is gonna show up on this form. But there really isn't a decision about whether to, whether to honor it or not, you've gotta sign contracts. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be items like that and somehow we wanna make the, that visual to you that, you know, this is, this is, even though it's an increase, it's not really a decision, but that's based on, you know, what the FinCom's instructing us to do.
We would take that under advisement to see what, someplace else unfortunately, we can perhaps do a cut to make up for the cost.
Exactly. Exactly, yeah.
So those are very important and that's excellent.
Yeah, yeah. Are there dates that you as the board want to plan on convening maybe in more budget work sessions?
I'm wondering if we should have one on January thirty first. The reason being, and this might be a thing you could make noon time that day to close petitions, we get an update on what seems to be the final thing petitions.
Yeah.
And would get us prepared, I can't imagine we're not gonna want to have, we won't have things to talk about.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
By the way, when I see all these BOS working sessions, they're all basically four o'clock, is that the, they're all agreeing at this time?
We, we were just gonna propose four o'clock, but that's based on your schedule, so it's really up to you.
Yeah, I just, well, four seems to be working, but there wasn't a time listed when we did this before, so I just wanna be sure.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
It matters to me because I have Masco School Committee on many of those nights beginning at seven, so.
Okay.
It works okay to do it at four, it's not at five.
Yeah, no, we were being presumptuous, but we didn't wanna be that presumptuous, so we left out the time.
Okay, so if we counted as four o'clock.
Is four o'clock okay with the rest of the board?
Yeah, I think that'd be clever. Thank you.
And we should probably, we, we try to limit them for one hour, although we expect. So the question is, are we being naive by just doing one hour, should we aim for one hour and then extend it when necessary? That's really up to you, it's your, it's.
Why, why do we even have a?
We don't need it.
We don't have to, but.
We need to burn in time. We'll end it when it be.
I just remember what we're meeting every single week.
Make it an hour and a half.
We'll end it when it's done.
Make it an hour and a half, sometimes it may go early, sometimes it may go a little late, but just put it in for that and.
It's up to whoever would like to do it.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So the, the working session is currently a January third, tenth and seventeenth, three weeks in a row. Do you wanna add the one for the one thirty one?
You give it to me again, January third?
Third, tenth and seventeenth and the three, the three ones these in January.
I got you.
Yeah.
And then if we add one to the thirty first, it just was a working session, not one that we have departments scheduled to attend.
No, but I think that there'll be plenty of for us to talk about, we're gonna need some extra work stuff.
Oh, yeah, and then there's always the last minute votes and.
And it does give us a heads up right at that point. If you shut off at noon time, even if you've not had a chance to do all the background work and everything, you could say, I just received this today, but at least we have a heads up.
And it's more, I like the work sessions because they tend to be a little more informal, you're not worried about the powder in your nose before a meeting. And, but also it gives me the chance, like it's not as formal, you don't have to worry about doing the packet. So you, so I'm trying to balance all of the workload.
So you're gonna add one on the thirty first?
We'll add the thirty first and the question for you is, where else does it make sense to add them now? Because I'd rather add them if you feel that we need them and then cancel them than to have to schedule them mid, midway because with everything going on, so that's a question for you all, if, if we need to have a standing meeting every other Wednesday, where?
I'm looking at the January calendar right here, am I wrong, I think about two thousand eighteen, if I do, March two thousand eighteen, uh, I have Monday is the twenty sixth, you have Monday is the twenty second.
When is the twenty second in January?
So January or March?
No, I'm, I'm looking at January, that's okay, I just went off the tracks in the background, thank you.
There is one that has a two thousand seventeen date.
So actually what I was looking at.
Yeah, so this is really just, yeah, we wanna do it.
Yeah, okay.
I think you've changed it too much to ask for an email just with the, just with the BOS meetings, once they get nailed down to it.
Yeah, some plain email, like an old fashioned email, not in Outlook.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Sure. The last board love those, you guys hate them.
They get so confused.
Sorry about that.
Catherine, what, what are the budgets due to the FinCom, I, I should see them, yeah.
Um, it's, it is.
Which, where is this?
It's on January fifth, it's a Friday town account provides Board of Selectmen and FinCom with budget, only of us in, with town administrators knows.
So we can come back.
So that's, that's when all the departments have to have their stuff in.
I meant one of the all.
Yeah, yeah. No, they have to have it in by the eleven and it's the first year, December eleventh.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, fine.
And the second tier is December twenty first.
December twenty first, okay.
Level one and level two.
So, so here's the issue. The, the issue is that the, the Board of Selectmen should be reviewing budgets before they go to the FinCom, right? I mean, we, we, we should be reviewing the budgets before they get submitted to the FinCom.
Well, we didn't.
At least for hours, for hours.
We didn't do that last year because we had the, we had the departments come in and, and talk. This is just when they're putting in their request, they're not, there's a place on the budget form where, or it doesn't show this. So, so on this spreadsheet, there's actually, so we get to the point of proposed department budget.
Yeah.
And then there's actually two more columns, one is the, the Board of Selectmen's budget and next one is the FinCom's budget. So you're both kind of doing that at the same time.
I, I have to, I can't speak to the last two years.
Okay.
But I have to tell you before that it was very helpful when the departments under the selectmen came to the FinCom that the selectmen had already been the budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to.
Not necessarily.
Otherwise, otherwise, the FinCom starts to work on a budget that we are gonna change or.
It's a relief to the FinCom, they can defer to us or not, but it's, it's, in my days, at least it was, it was appreciated.
Yeah, yeah.
That sequence.
Actually, I thought, I thought that we did do some December ones.
Because Kelly, the other part is that, that you were one of the, I don't know if it's instrumental, but the, the whole concept of possibly viewing the departments under the selectmen is one mega department, that doesn't work unless we do it that way.
Right, right.
That's right.
I think, I think what we're trying, when we're connecting the jobs, we just kept, we did this today.
That's okay.
And I'm glad that we're bringing this up because from my recollection, it was helpful that there was clarification and there was a realignment if say, somebody under the Board of Selectmen is going off the trail and saying, well, that's essential, we need that and then the rest of us are saying, not really.
Or, or if the rest was saying, yes, you do need it, but we can, you need ten more pencils, so we can take five of our pencils and five of our pencils.
Well, right, and so we'll get it more holistically.
And then the FinCom can accept that approach or not, but.
Correct. I mean, that's an easy enough fix, cause it's, they'll be submitting them on December eleventh, I can just, I can just email them to you on, let's say, December eighteenth. Well, we can meet in December. The dis, the then that way you'll have access to, you'll see what their budgets are at that point. So December.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, so.
And then we can start discussing, I mean, I would typically wanna have them at least a couple of days and then start discussing them, I have no problem with, with that.
Now that I've remembered, you know what, it wasn't, okay, the reason this might seem it's a gap is because I think last year we did have work sessions in December, but it wasn't at, we didn't outline it at the beginning of the process. And here we're trying to put everything up front, so that's why they're not, they weren't on our old list, but that was what we did last year, we had meetings and we. So these meetings in January, these were basically, we had two meetings or at least one night in December, maybe December sixth or thirteenth or twentieth, that we just scheduled two hours and people came in and said, okay, this is what we're thinking, this is what we've got on the docket, what do you think, and then give us a chance to ask questions.
To the departments.
Heads key.
Yes, under the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we compiled everything and we said, okay, you puts, you equals this, okay, if we have to come up with twenty five grand for the trash budget, where are we gonna find that, is there room here so that before we go to the FinCom, we're not, we've solved some of the issues that might have come up before goes to the thing.
Then, then the FinCom has the Board of Selectmen's viewpoint to take any of that, they're independent, they're, it's all making.
All right, so maybe, what if we add more December? So, so, so eleven, I'm sorry, twelve eleven is when I will receive the budgets from all those, the, the departments that are under the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if we do a working session on December thirteenth. Does that give you enough time to put it together?
Well, well, so.
Yeah, that's what we did the last year, remember that one?
So if you get them, you send them right out to us, that'll give us two days.
Um, no, you'd be getting them on the, the thirteenth, they'll, they'll come. No.
Then I would say have the meeting on the fourteenth, at least give us some time to have them, to look at them.
Well, I can give you, I can, we can email you their actual budget.
Yeah, that's all.
But in terms of when I start compiling it, that, that you'll get on that day, you'll get all of them at once.
But the, I'd be corrected if I wanted, but the first step is the department heads coming to present for that. Like we shouldn't be messing around with the police department budget until the chief comes and tells us why it is what it is.
Do we wanna see the preliminary requests before, before we get a conversation?
Seeing is fine, but in terms of the meeting process.
So.
Yeah, we, we just view it, but I don't, we don't see it.
So the eleventh I get the budgets. Yeah. But the twelve, um, the, the, the Board of Selectmen gets the budgets by email. And that's just as they come into us, so we'll see them the same way we're seeing them when we open them up. And then what we'll do is synthesize them into an umbrella. On.
Give us a couple of days beyond that.
Thursday, maybe the fourteenth.
And then we can have a, and then we can have a working session for the department.
Let's do, we'll do what session?
You wouldn't want it on Thursday.
How many working sessions did you do last year?
Thursday, the fourteenth is the party.
With the, with the Board of Selectmen budgets, was it one or was it two? Oh, yeah, that sounds.
I think it had to be a couple.
There was, yeah, it was a couple at least. Do you wanna do it on the, on the twentieth and the twenty first?
What month, we end up, December?
We're in December.
Oh, we're just making Christmas Eve.
Okay, tell me this, yeah, right? Um, what if, what if, so we could send them to the, does one day give you enough time to take them? All I'm doing is, all I'm doing is emailing the budgets. Well, yeah, but that, that won't take time, it, what's gonna take the time that we need to bring information to the board is you taking individual budgets from all the different departments and putting them into one central document. How much time do you need to do that? No, that can be, that can be here. So then could we have it there? But they don't wanna do that, they want, they wanna be able to think about it first. They don't wanna do, I mean, the thirteenth, you don't wanna have a working session on the thirteenth when you receive the budget on the twelfth. Oh, okay. How about the sixteenth? Or do you care? I mean, eighteen, how about the eighteenth on Monday?
That's what I was thinking.
All right, so we wanna do the eighteenth and the twentieth for working sessions at four P M? Do you wanna do the four P M?
I can do, this is, this is an off week in terms of.
Yes, it is, there's no Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah. Again, not that you wouldn't do the, the same, but the, the departments don't need to have equal amounts of time, you know, the big ones, it should be proportionate, like, right?
No. All right, so. Oh, and so that's another question now, a decision point, do you wanna meet with all, all of the departments or do you just wanna meet with the ones that have something that's out of, outside of the guidelines or something that is essential and unfunded and they want the opportunity to meet with you?
To, to me, it's a little of both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, well, you could do that, right?
I think they definitely need to talk to the people that have significant budgets.
That's why I asked.
That's a big one.
Well, well, that's, that's an over there.
Right, so if, so if there's a big.
Maybe they're on that way, they need to talk to fire and employees.
If there's a big budget, even if it's on guidelines, they should come in.
Police?
Yeah.
Fire?
Yeah.
Building inspectional services and obviously we'll move here anyway for Board of Selectmen.
I mean, people may feel differently, to me, if there's, if the town account is, is, is within guidelines.
What am I missing? Board of Health?
And the same as last year and within guidelines, I don't necessarily need a presentation.
So if the Board of, if the Board of Health and the ConCom are within guidelines, do we need to meet with them? Do you want to meet with them or not?
Makes sense to chat, I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna see something that's within the guidelines that raises questions or not, but I, I don't wanna pose up on people, so I don't know what to be, your judgment.
It's really up to you. Five minutes, uh, you know.
I, I don't, I don't, I mean, again, we're not quite zero based on the word close, so, you know, it's kind of, again, it's my opinion. Clearly, if there's an essential unfunded, that they are, and then if there are substantial budget, like the one you talked about, even if it appears. Because sometimes it appears to be unguided and then.
A good example is the inspectional services, usually they're within guidelines, do you wanna meet with him or not?
Is there any, for lack of a word, controversial or habitual or?
No.
And they're not facing, you know, it's not like we're holding back now for a capital thing next year, I mean, you know, sort of,
If they're not proposing any staffing changes.
If, if they're not really dealing with capital stuff and stuff that varies year to year, if it's very straightforward, I think that's probably.
Right, and then when we, when we get the budgets, if, if someone says, oh, what's going on with inspection services, does it, then you could bring it in.
We can ask questions.
And we're gonna have them for a week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so what we have now is that, that tier of budgets is coming, be returned on the eleventh.
Yeah, based on the first meeting, we're gonna see the Board of. We do wanna see the, the special services.
On the twelfth, they'll be emailed to the Board of Selectmen as is. The eighteenth and the twentieth at four P M, there'll be working sessions with departments scheduled to, for any period of time based on what it looks like they need.
Yep.
All right, so then the only other piece that that impacts is that we probably don't need three working sessions in January. Three in January. Do you want to add one more working session, we, we have the one on the thirty first, so we actually have four in January. Do you wanna just add one more in January or do you wanna have two in January, not two on the thirty first? So right now we have.
Or you could leave them scheduled.
Leave them scheduled.
Leave it like it is.
We can always save about week one next week.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take out the part that says department's short fifteen minutes as needed scheduled. And I'll take that out, all three of those and just have the BOS working session.
Yeah, call it on department conferences or something like that.
So these ones here are called department conferences. Well, and those may be, you know, we, we'll be getting in January, so you sort of leave the budget lane and you go into the warrant lane in January.
Budget, budget conferences, obviously.
So maybe.
Budget conferences, obviously.
So just leaving them on there and just ready work session.
Budget conferences. When you post it.
Yeah, if we, if we end up doing, if, if you do department conferences earlier, that's fine.
Yeah, so December, yeah, so December your budget meeting, yeah, so it's a little.
For people who don't have this.
Right.
I'm not so much worried about which happens when, I think it's good that we. I'm not so much worried about which happens when, I think it's good that we keep them all scheduled right now, it's been busy times.
Yes, nature.
If one of those gets taken off, I put something else in that I can't change and then we see we really have a rock we have to push here, let's, I wanna know we can meet soon.
It's hard. Yeah. It's a lot easier to have it on the schedule than cancel than it is to try to get everything together.
I'd bother rather to do that.
No question.
Yeah.
So that would be helpful, just so we're gonna leave them on for every Wednesday in January except for the twenty fourth.
Yes.
The other thing that this does, which I appreciate Mark's pointing a lot on this, is it advances our review schedule a little bit and makes it easier for the FinCom to have a little more time.
Yes.
And by sequencing those and giving them more time, I think we're helping the overall process.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay.
Since the guy was not part of it.
So then in December, we have the eighteenth and the twentieth for those for those budget conferences with the Board of Selectmen. And then on January, I think it was January fifth, is when the omnibus completed um the of department versions is submitted to both the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. And when you get that spreadsheet, that's where you'll see the spreadsheet that all it has a summary spreadsheet on it, it has a pie like what was presented the other night for Mark in terms of where pieces are fitting, it also has um the essential unfunded items, we will be filled out on that as well.
That are included in the budget?
It's included on the spreadsheet that has the budget. It's part of the budget form.
Because if it's some some that are that are requested and are are gonna be approved, others that are requested and won't be approved.
Their worksheets. Yeah, um.
Which are we gonna see? All?
Some that are gonna be requested that are, if if you tell me to make changes between the eighteenth and the twentieth, you'll s- I'll I'll reveal that that
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
that that next window on the floor.
And usually when we meet, when you consolidate everything, well, you might have just said this, but let me just be clear that we consolidate, they see the initial budgets as they come in, you take them and you put them into your the central database, if you will, and then we come up with the summary, so we have a roll up. And then we also pull out collectively all of the Board of Selectmen um essential unfunded, or is that like a separate? I remember last year us taking all of the extras and putting them into one list.
Well, that's because there was a question about the two percent and and um I don't know that I don't know.
Might not make sense this year, only because everything's at a zero and then you come with a huge list.
Yeah, I don't think it will.
You should you should.
Okay, so we get everybody's budgets and there are a bunch of different forms, they've got their budget worksheets, they've got a sheet that tells us if you're above zero and other, tell us why. Explain it, that's one sheet, and there's gonna be a bunch on there.
If you're above guidelines.
Above guideline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zero and other is the guideline, level funded. If you wanna buy an extra pencil and you can't find another place in your other budget to pay for that extra pencil,
Yeah.
that's gonna fall on this sheet and you're gonna have to explain to us why you need it.
But that's different than unfunded essential?
Yes.
Yes.
If you go to, I just want to try me one more time, is that different than a pencil?
Because it's outside of the guideline, so we have a sheet, we have to describe why it's outside of the guidelines and justification.
Yeah, but it will not contractually committed, most of the unfunded.
We're gonna have to change the 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 form that this all gets funneled on to, the the what you saw last year, the the essential unfunded.
But yeah.
That's what I'm.
Yeah.
It's gonna need to be changed a little bit based on the zero percent, so that.
That's okay, but still, I don't think I'm wrong on this, it's still, I think I was the one that invented it.
Yeah.
Essential. Yes.
That's the.
So essential unfunded is, we've never seen it before, but we need it, or it's not being funded, or it's supplemental and out of guideline.
Out of guideline.
Does that make sense?
No, it's the FinCom made it clear that anything that's that's above of out of guideline needs to go, needs to be pulled off and put on that, so I specifically.
I I kinda agree with Mark, if you got a zero guideline, they're basically one in the same.
That's what I'm saying, but.
Sounds good.
Well, what the FinCom is trying to do is.
We don't have to do two schedules, we may not understand it.
No, well, the trash, the trash contract, that's gonna go on the outside of guidelines worksheet.
Yeah. That's the essential.
Now, if I wanted to start a leaf composting program, which I think is essential.
Yeah. Oh, you're making so to speak a schedule B one and B two instead of a schedule B, you're setting your distinction.
I have another schedule, yeah. Well, we've had those, we've had two different forms before.
Oh, okay.
So you have your base budget, you've got what sticks over guideline is the middle, and then the last one is essential essential unfunded.
That's from. Yeah. Yeah. Well, so within the base budget, there's a distinction for items over guidelines, but that are within the that they think should be within the base. Some people are gonna interpret this differently.
I know, I know, but we're we're trying to get.
Yeah. That's right.
What we're trying to get to is if you need more than zero percent, you need to outline why, and that's how you identify it.
Right.
It is just to provide you with something that's consistent across the board and say, this is what this is.
Yeah.
As long as it's consistent and you understand it.
Like, I agree, like, I think, well, I mean, it might be something, but I think the trash to me, that that twenty five grand or fifty grand or whatever, that's not essential unfunded, that goes in, to me, that goes in the base budget with a comma or an asterisk or something, but that's kind of what you're saying.
No, we're saying it goes in the middle form.
That that was the suggestion, is just to do like a com- there's a place for comments and asterisks and stuff, but so I specifically asked the FinCom.
No, I didn't know it was a middle form. Yeah. Yeah, they wanted it extracted during.
They wanted.
So it appears there and it's sort of called out as all the things that we didn't do last year or by tradition
Yes, right.
It's just form.
Yes.
that we're gonna take a look at piece by piece, whether or not they're inside the zero guideline or not.
And then and then at some point when the FinCom says, oh, yeah, of course we need to keep the trash, you know, well, we don't have a choice, then they make the decision to put it back into the base.
Do they have a price escalator built into their contract?
It's a two tier, isn't it?
It's just two tier.
It's a two tier, so one price and then after the sec- first five years at one price, second five years.
And then.
Oh, well, so that's the break.
Yeah, that was negotiated.
Yeah.
All right.
So we're basically dissecting what we've done before, and the difference between this year and last year is that we're calling out
Yeah.
everything that's not a level budget and explaining that.
Yeah, thank you.
And then the third one is the get on your hands and knees and back, cause that's a bad chance.
The third one has come back in ten years.
Get it on the list.
Yeah, and define essential, like, what does that mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, so I think so uh my next steps, our next steps.
This is the schedule, yeah, okay.
Well, that's the draft schedule.
That's a real bad version of it.
Yeah.
And the updated.
We needed some feedback from you, which we got, thank you.
Yeah.
Can can I add some, one more on on the schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is for for the public, we've had this sometimes in the past, it usually is driven by how things are going, if there are big issues and no issues, but do do we have a plan to, and this the board very much here, to have a a public budget forum sometime?
It is not in this.
And what's that?
Not here.
It's not in it.
Okay.
It that is not in here, but that is for you, that's a policy discussion.
Yes, so I think, but I think it would be good to to talk about when we would have it, because there's that mix between we couldn't have it tonight because we don't have budget, so to speak, and to have it just before town meeting, you can still have it, because that means it's like a pre-town meeting, you give a chance people understand more of what's on it, but uh so what what do we think, when's the plan?
One of the suggestions.
What is possible is we have five working sessions, of which two or three may involve department conferences. If maybe something could be fit in on one of those, because we talked, we said we won't cancel them now.
Oh, okay.
If we need, but I'm just saying, we have some time set aside.
Yes.
In the January timeframe, you mean?
No, I'm talking, um, yeah, January timeframe.
So another suggestion that I heard being bounced around that is about makes sense.
Excuse me, but they wouldn't be at a different time, they wouldn't be at at four o'clock typically, a public forum.
Well, we can make some adjustments, they're just safely on it.
Yeah, okay, fine. Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, no, and and that was something that we had maybe briefly touched upon, um, I'm I'm thinking in terms of format, I'm thinking of when the call-in center came in and did their presentation, we had the joint FinCom and we had, well, it was joint meeting with FinCom and and the Board of Selectmen. And I'm sort of thinking as a format, you could open it up and have a joint meeting and then how allow for public feedback and comment. Um, you could do it on a night that you don't have simultaneous meetings or like maybe if the FinCom, so we just have to make sure that we coordinate with their schedule. Um, but I think that that's something that was sort of batted around, is an opportunity for people just to give comment um and to offer feedback about a process or any particular budget.
Would January eighth or January fifteenth, which is not currently on our calendar?
Oh.
Or Monday, or Monday, January twenty fourth.
That's a holiday.
I mean, no, Wednesday, January twenty four.
Yeah, that's happening.
It's gonna be on the FinCom, though, they've got.
Oh, the FinCom, yeah, I mean, are we ever ready that you guys.
Which means should be joint meeting. To Monday night, then.
It could be Monday the twenty second, I know that's, now that holiday too.
Yes.
Monday the twenty second?
That's what I was gonna.
Now, that holiday too.
No, it's the fifteenth is a holiday.
Fifteenth is a holiday, okay, it used to be, Washington was born on the fifteenth, but realized now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on.
It was born on it was born on the twenty second, born on the twenty second.
Their business sisters.
Well, this is in Washington, and Lincoln were born on the same day, they pretended.
Wow. Yeah. We should get the twelve off.
So propose that they be joint meeting.
Anyway, right now, that'll.
So we in the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom on January twenty second.
Yeah, and we can call it budget forum.
On the twenty sixth.
It's a good time to sort of check in with both boards to see if there's any other outstanding questions and, I don't know, I think I think it'd be great.
Well, we can do that, I I.
And people have been talking about it, it's just we've never actually scheduled.
My suggestion was that it's a forum.
You still don't have, you still don't have a public forum.
What's the difference between a forum and a joint meeting?
We've had them many times, single issue or multi issue.
No.
We don't have a public forum scheduled in here, but.
No.
We come to a time.
Or sort of, but it's not a meeting, it's not a time when the FinCom talks to the selectmen.
No.
No.
It's a time when the audience talks.
So it's not a joint meeting then?
We're all available.
No, it is a joint.
We could have a joint meeting, but the the twenty second is a normal selectmen's meeting.
It's opposed to the.
Opposed to each other.
Public forum.
We're gonna do a forum, but it's not gonna be a standard selectmen's meeting.
Oh, it's that's an almost selectmen's meeting on the twenty fourth.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Yeah, I thought it was.
There's all meeting.
No.
Wait, do we?
So we're gonna do one of those like Proctor, we're talking about one of those Proctor kitchen things.
So, January twenty second, a joint meeting between the Board of.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, wait, we're we're trying to figure out if it's a selectmen's meeting or not.
Proctor cafeteria, it's usually in Proctor.
The twenty second is.
It is, well, then.
Oh.
The twenty fourth is the, the twenty fourth is not here, the twenty fourth is when you should have the forum in the cafeteria at Proctor School.
It doesn't cut it. Thank you. I go, the twenty fourth.
But when so night.
Proctor School.
That's fine.
So moves the chair.
That takes care of that.
Okay, January twenty second.
Okay.
It's a gathering, it's a gathering, sir. One twenty four.
January twenty four, and it's gonna be a public budget forum.
It's a Wednesday.
Public forum.
Yes.
Public forum on on town budget.
Public budget forum, or is it, okay.
And what time?
Night.
Seventeen?
Seven, seven thirty.
I think seven thirty, yeah.
Seven thirty?
Yes.
And then generally, generally would be some type of basic introduct- couple of little introductory, maybe
Okay, so it's not the twenty second.
easy for me to say, the FinCom just goes, sound kind of like what Karen did the other night, goes through the process, and when we are in the process,
Yeah.
general outlook, and then go to people, and then questions.
And that that will be at Proctor.
Yes.
And the cafeteria, and I don't mean this in a restrictive way, but it might be helpful if we ask for questions the week before.
Cafeteria.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I'm not saying that, people can't talk if they, but you know, it gives us some idea.
Great idea.
Yeah? Okay.
We'd like to answer questions rather than just accept them.
Yeah. So public forum, and then maybe we can just put a press release and talk with the and to talk to the newspaper about posting a T S A or something.
Yeah. And, yeah, we definitely want to get film crew in there, box the cable.
Yeah. That's good. So we'll run it by Karen Dow tomorrow, so she can check with the FinCom members and see if they can use or that. So don't make any plans on Wednesday nights in January, we're gonna have you hard at work.
Or my.
I'm gonna make sure that the real son of the email is getting. I'm telling you, I mean, unless you don't want me to cut them.
Okay, so we have lots of work to do, is there any, well, I don't wanna take away from the chat.
There is a business.
Let me just add one more comment as far as trying to get through the crunch times and that. And that is that we take advantage of the technologies that we have, and I I thought of one of them, where, for example, we had trouble with numbers apparently last year. We use technology right, we can very quickly print out these, these are all the numbers that we have, because you call out that particular type and somebody can go down through that in about one minute to see if there's any errors in the num- that the numbers that they line up or not. That's just one example, but we've got to take advantage of the technology when we try to do things. For example, match merging, bringing things together, when somebody's bringing something in, we just, we don't have to retype it and we don't have to copy paste, we have the merge happen within the documents as system support.
You'd have to upgrade my computer, I could tell you that right now, to support what you want to do.
If if you, Catherine, this stuff's been around for like fifteen years, twenty years, so so it's not.
I hope I could do it here, I could.
Okay, okay, wow, I'll be glad to come in and help you and see if it does or not, yeah, I would, yeah, I'll be glad to come in, sure.
Yeah. I'd be worried if you try to do it on this computer.
Okay. All right.
We didn't all work for IBM.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you take questions from the audience while you go?
Uh, yes, yes.
Just very quickly. How does the public get involved in this process, other than that one day per son, on a daily basis, how do we get involved?
I don't. I personally think it's very difficult to get the public involved in this process. It's a busy process, it's a it's a it's a heavy duty process that's compressed into a finite period of time. And I'm concerned about being able to meet some of that those deadlines if we got a public process that's lengthy and time consuming.
Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
Could we take suggestions, though, I mean, that's the initial suggestions, I was.
Yeah, sure. I was gonna suggest, you know, I speak for myself, um, that if people have concerns about particular issues, particular things, um, I'd be more than happy to take emails preferably, but calls if so be. Um, and to carry those in, no guarantee that we're all gonna agree on it, but in terms of at least having that as part of the input process. I agree that there are so many moving parts that, and I know this sounds kind of highfalutin and philosophical, but um, the fact that we're elected officials means to some extent the trust put in us to becoming elected um needs to be exercised by us in relation to um trying to represent the town, and we're not in a position where six thousand people can make these decisions.
Sure.
Um, at the same time, I'd like to reflect any particular concerns that are brought forward personally, I'll bring them here.
What was fun is I'm reading your Board of Selectmen description online, and I like this word, Board of Selectmen is an outgrowth. Did you know you were an outgrowth? I mean, it's not derogatory.
I just.
But it's an outgrowth for for the major decision-making body, which is the town meeting.
You can add old version.
Yep.
So so you re- you are, we've elected you to represent us. But I just hate to, as I told several of you, I just hate to go to the town meeting floor with either a citizen's petition and say, gee, you guys haven't been listening to us. So here's what we want to do, it would be easier if we had a process, and you've just opened it for yourself.
Right, and I.
Thank you.
I I I I'll speak for every one of us, I think that anybody can get a hold of us with a particular issue.
Okay, absolutely. So you don't mind that?
I don't, I welcome.
Okay, I welcome.
So how do how do we do that?
What's the what's the best way to text an email?
Personal email?
J Spencer at Knoxville hyphen M A's.
No.
There's a Board of Selectmen email address.
Uh, we have, and we have an email address that.
I have an email.
And I have a phone number in the phone book, you can call me if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Yeah, 'cause we'd like to lobby you now, not on the night of the meeting.
I prefer to be lobbying now than to have a meeting where dissension is there because people feel that they are left out.
Yeah. So it works.
Being part of and having everything that's trying to be part of, you might want to have happen. No guarantee on that, but I think we need to at least reflect on it, think about it and respond to it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Go, Georgia.
Yeah, yeah, I had a second. I'd love to hear all the food.
Hi.
All right.
I wanted to get in before you get down. 'Cause you can debate that. Thank you for all the work putting that together, thank you.
That's what I was trying to see you for.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay, we're just trying to.
Hello, Ralph, but you don't have a license?
Oh, why do you? Another one of the changes that we can have. Yeah.
It's been thoroughly massaged at this point.
That's fine, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please, I can tell you.
Good, good, bye bye.
It's good, it's all.